The panelist. Hey, Jesse, you're being promoted to panelist.
Hello. You guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Great. All right, anyone? This is everyone, I guess, right? Small group. Let's, I guess, start the meeting. Sound like recording was already happening, right?
Yep.
Forget the beginning stuff. I'm Jesse Major, Chair of the Housing Subcommittee for the Planning Board of Amherst. We are meeting today, Tuesday, December 17th at 11:30. We'll just have a roll call of attendance. I guess, starting with Fred Harwell.
Red is here.
Who's called them? Oops, I went out of order.
I'm here.
Karen Winter.
Here.
And Jesse Major, I am here as well. Great. I see two people in attendees, unless there's objection, I would just bring them over just to be part of the conversation as we've been doing. Objection to that. I see Andy Churchill and Janet McGowan.
Yeah, I want to, yeah, as long as we bring everyone over, I think that's fine if there are a lot and we, you know, so we can, you'll be asked to be promoted to panelist, the attendees.
Yeah, great. Thanks, thanks. And yes, I agree if there's 20 people, probably wouldn't do that, but. So you'll, I can bring them over, actually. Oh, no, you got it.
Yeah. It takes a minute. I know I was actually, that actually happened to me at a meeting recently and I, it is true, this, your screen goes black and you're kind of in, you know, like the Twilight Zone for a few seconds.
Yeah. And then you're able to hang with us for this meeting?
I am, yes.
Thank you for that. Okay, so while Janet's coming over, we can do the minutes, which is not much to do. I only have half the minutes ready from last time, so I will get them in shape for our next meeting. Karen, I'm hoping you're willing to do minutes for today. And again, it can be, it doesn't have to be super detailed like the full board minutes. Thank you for that, Karen. All right. Let me just find, oops, I lost the agenda. So I think first was just continued discussion of housing rental properties, Amherst regulations and policies. I had some thoughts to share having to do with the student definition, which I think is hopefully getting some work done, right, by Nate and you and others. Perhaps I was going to offer, if, if there's conversation to be had, please lead us through that if you want input. If you don't, that's also fine if you guys are just working on it.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I have, you know, after the last meeting or the planning board meeting, I, you know, it's a small modification to what was in there for staff to look at. The state did come out with regulations for ADUs and it looks like that student home definition is an unreasonable and possibly a prohibited regulation that cannot be applied.
It is?
Yeah, yeah. So the state has said, like, you can't restrict occupancy by age. You can't even acquire, require it to be affordable or have even some AMI level on it. They really don't want any conditions or standards or prohibitions on the use.
Our definition doesn't talk about age, though, right?
It's to the use, though. So if there's a few places where it seems like, so the student home definition could still, you know, staff was saying, well, we'll still look at it. I think there could be a place for it in the bylaw, whether it's owner or general, but maybe it, the way the state, the draft regulations are written right now, it can't be applied to ADUs.
Okay. Where is that? Is that language available somewhere you can share with us? Just the state, what they put out?
Yeah, I think it's in the planning board packet for tonight.
Okay. Tomorrow night, hopefully.
Yeah, tomorrow night.
All right, I'll take a look at it there. I, I was not aware that happened. That's a little disappointing to me. Guessing you all feel similarly. And so, sorry, just state again what you're seeing as the reason, because, because our definition or our proposed use of it would limit the use of an ADU. That's what you're saying?
Yes, so unreasonable regulation. Is there, so a prohibited regulation is one that has a use and occupancy restriction. So a requirement that are protected use ADU be subject to a use and occupancy restriction. So anything that does have to do with that is a prohibited regulation. And then unreasonable regulation is one that will substantially diminish or interfere with the use of the development. Or, you know, there's some other, they have a bunch of other kind of pieces to that. So it just, you know, it seems like we could ask our town attorney, but on the face of it, you know, staff said, this is really balls within, could have been either an unreasonable or a prohibited regulation.
All right, Janet, did you, were you just raising your hand to get in or did you have something to add?
I, I think it's, I think it'd be good to get a legal opinion from the town attorney on this because it's not really an unreasonable regulation in a town where over half the residents are students to try to live in. And then, you know, we know the impact of student housing on neighborhoods. And we also know the, the impact, you know, just in term, not just in behavior, but just the fact is, you know, rental properties prices are so high that, you know, UMass staff, families, people are really struggling to get into the neighborhoods. And I think that it's not going to slow down people's ability to rent. I mean, because there's a huge housing demand across the board, but I would, you know, I understand like the aim of the legislation, which is sort of to open up housing in, you know, kind of suburban towns. And we've had that door open for a long time. And we aren't restricting density. And I think it, you know, we're kind of a special condition. And I would think that we could get through, you know, the ADU legislation is trying to open up suburban towns. We've been wide open. I'd love a legal opinion on that. It's not restricting the use in the sense that it's a rental property available to everybody except, you know, student home, which isn't necessarily students, because frankly, it could have two students and two, you know, UMass staff people in it and not be a student home. So I think the restriction is kind of minor or small, you know, in terms of our housing stock. So I think a legal opinion would be really helpful, like, could this make it through? And if the answer is maybe, I think we should try.
Yeah, I would tend, I would tend to agree with that. Fred, give a hint of?
Yeah, I. The way we had discussed this, it's, it's not necessarily a limitation on the ADU. It's a limitation on, one, in the case of an ADU to a single family, it's a limitation on either A or B. It's not a, it does not say that if you're, if you're a student, you can't be there. It just says you can't be there times two. And it's, it's also, I think, becoming clear that the legislature never really got their arms around the kind of market that Amherst has. And I would absolutely be inclined to go ahead and test this. And it certainly, as Janet said, it's certainly worth some discussion with the town attorneys. And very possibly putting it in place and inviting the state to, to step in and then we bring it to court. But and I would also want to discuss this with our state rep.
Also, fine ideas. Bruce, go ahead.
I agree with Janet and with Fred. And also I raised my hand because at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission meeting last week, a woman by the name of Chris Klutchman from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities gave a fairly comprehensive presentation on this, on the Affordable Housing Act and specifically the ADU fraction of the Affordable Housing Act and its intentions and so forth. And following that presentation, there was a discussion and I raised my hand and was recognized and basically made the, stated the situation as I saw it. And making the case that Amherst was a unique community. Chris Klutchman responded sympathetically saying, and then she kind of listed other communities around the state in a similar situation to which I kind of rebutted by saying, yes, but these other communities that you've mentioned are either large communities with large tertiary institutions in them or small communities with small tertiary institutions in them. I don't think there's any other small community with a large tertiary institution that gives the proportional situation that we're in. I said, I maintain, and Amherst maintains that it is a unique community in Massachusetts. And I was fairly clear about that. As I'm trying to be now, kind of giving you an indication of the strength of my presentation. And I think it made an impression on the various commissioners. And her, I don't think, she then came back and said, well, you should talk to your representative and if this is going to change, it's going to be changed by the act of the legislature. So that was where we got on that. But this situation is an interesting alternative that maybe, so I think based on, on the contention that we are a, not just, I think we might have to create a table that shows the uniqueness, because unique is not relative. You either unique or you're not. It's not, you know, you're not somewhat unique. We are unique and we should make the case that we are unique. And then the basis of successfully making that case say, therefore, we should be treated differently. Or we have, we have, we will argue that we should be treated differently. And how do you propose to treat us differently? And, and, and I think the case that Janet has made and Fred has made that we could go about it in this particular way makes sense to me.
Yep, I, I completely agree. What I was hoping to discuss, which we still can, I've started to put together some types of data to gather to make this case exactly, right?
Yes.
I had anticipated it for the council, for the Amherst Council, but I think you're right, Fred. We might need, if we have actual data to point to, it makes our position much, much stronger. We'll come back to that in a minute, maybe.
And, and just so you know, I've sent the present, the PDF, the PowerPoint PDF presence, files of these presentations to Nate and to, and to Doug Marshall. They may or may not be distributed in the course of today or early tomorrow. But I thought it was relevant to this topic and so I've sent them out. Jesse, I'll send it to you privately because I can do that.
Thank you.
And Janet, I'll send it to you as well because I can do that.
Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, for the minutes, I want to know from Bruce exactly what Chris Krutchman and what was the meeting? That was one thing. And, and the other thing is that I totally agree. This is our only chance. This is really our only chance, one of the only chances. If this doesn't work, we have to, we have to really try property tax completely different for owner occupied than for the other. And I don't know how that's going to go through. So if we don't make a whirlwind of a storm around this and with, with the data that we do, that's maybe how we'd have to devote our meeting. What data would be useful? How to put it together, a table and present it? That would be the next step. So what?
Well, we, we might have to, I'll, I'll give you the name of the woman. Her name is Chris and her surname is K L U C H M A N. K L U C.
Can you shoot me an email? Just shoot me an email.
I did. Oh, I'll give you the name of the, yes, her name is on the presentation. Okay, I'll send that to you as well.
Thank you, just for the minute.
And, 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 and further to your point, Karen, we, we might find that we have to also demonstrate not only that we are a unique community, but at some point we might be obligated to wait until we really have a problem because some people will say, well, it's, you don't have to worry, it's not going to be a problem. And they could be right, you know? We've only had six of these ADUs that have been built since in the past four years in town. I read that in the housing report and so forth. So it may be that there isn't a problem, but, but we don't want to wait until there is a problem to think about how we deal with it because we think it's highly likely that there'll be a problem. But I think we should couch our conversation in terms of the likelihood of the problem, not the fact of the problem.
Yep, great. Janet?
So I, I'm, I'm glad Fred said what he said, because even if they, the, the court or the state comes back and says you can't restrict who lives in the ADU, then this bylaw would just restrict who lives in the main house. And so, so I think that might be, you know, the fail safe in this situation. So you'll achieve your goal, you'll open up housing for other people. You know, and if investors are buying property, then they have to find, you know, some non-student folk in there. And I think there'd be plenty of people they could fill their house with.
Yep. Maybe Nate, can you add maybe a perspective? Your perspective about? Well, okay, I guess procedurally, I don't know if, can we request that this goes to the town attorney? Like, who makes that request? Is that you? Is that us as a body? Like, how does that work? And, yeah, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think the, if the planning board wants to keep the definition in as the ADU bylaw moves forward, it gets sent to the attorney anyways. I, you know, we could do it separately. Yeah, Freddie, you made a good point. I, I pulled up the definition and I mean, I didn't change much from what was there before. So some of it is just if staff wants to add or change some language. And then we could run it by the attorney. You know, I think the planning board had said, let's try to put this into, into the ADU bylaw. So I think it's in there anyways. And so it'll be a part of the discussion tomorrow night. There's not, yeah, for the planning board, there has, I haven't updated anything just because the state regs came out last week and there's, we have to change our ADU bylaw in a few places. And the, the regulations are draft regulations. So there is a comment period opening December 20th and closing in early January from the state. And so these regulations could change, but the way they're written now, there's a few sections of our bylaw or draft bylaw or what we're been discussing that are not compliant with it. So you know, really what the state's doing is trying to allow ADUs basically just by a building permit. Right. And so they're saying you can't require any additional design standards or setbacks beyond what you do for single family homes. You know, you can't require parking, you can't require additional impact studies or reports. And so some of the things we had put in our, in the, you know, in our drafts are, go, go beyond that a little bit. There's still some questions about how you calculate the square feet. And now, you know, they put this as a protected use as a 48 section three. So now they're calling it a protected use ADU. So, you know, that goes, it's a little, I think it always had been in the section three is what they, the legislation, but you know, they're calling it out pretty clearly now as a protected use. So we just have to, you know, be careful with how we, we permit that or kind of regulate it. So, yeah, I mean, all for discussion tomorrow. I, I think we can still keep the student home definition in, given that it applies to one or only one unit of the combination.
Great. Bruce, go ahead.
Just a, a point of clarification, Nate. Do I correctly understand that what we're talking about is first of all, that the, that the act was voted on, whether it was earlier in the year to go into effect in February 2nd. And that as a part of the act, there is a thing that says that regulations will be drafted. And so up until now, I mean, until our previous meetings, we've been talking about the act, the language in the act. And now we're talking about the regulations that have been drafted in, in, as an effect, as a consequence of the act having been passed. Is that the way the process works here and why these regulations, so as you say, are new to us because they, they didn't come with the original act they come? Is that the way the, the system works?
Yeah, so those, those, these draft regulations just came out a week ago. And then the state's now saying they'll have a model bylaw. I think in late January or February, and they're still going to modify the regulations. And so, you know, it's an odd, to me, it's an odd, the timing's odd because, you know, the act becomes effective February 2nd, even though many towns won't have, you know, if you wait for the state, you'll, you won't be ready.
Yes, this was a persistent part of the conversation among the commissioners last week. And, and this slide deck that I sent might help folks cease because the woman who's in charge of doing all this was the one who was talking.
Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that perhaps we should suggest that the, I, I guess it should be the planning board make a public comment from Amherst. I, I, I kind of think that the people who are driving this train are utterly unaware of the situation we're confronting in this town. And they want, I think they need to be very careful about prohibiting something like we're discussing.
Yeah.
And that may have some traction. I also want to talk to our state rep.
Right, I was, I was going to remind us, so, so a couple of, when we first started the subcommittee, I had reached out to Mindy Dom's office. She was happy to join us at some point. I didn't feel like we've been ready since then. So again, when we think it's the right time, we can, I can re-invite her either to the subcommittee or maybe planning board can invite her for this discussion. I, I agree that would probably be useful sometime soon. Okay, since this is going to come up tomorrow night, I assume, of planning board, maybe we can move on from this piece and spend a few minutes talking about what kinds of data we might want to gather in support of, of this definition or use or ADU or otherwise. I think it'd be really good for us to start developing that. Before we do that, I meant to this earlier. We all know Janet, but Andy, if you're listening, and maybe you can just introduce yourself and tell us who you are and what your interested, interest is in this group.
Hi. Andy Churchill, I'm resident of town since 1995. I've served on the school committee and on the charter review committee or charter commission. Now on the charter review committee and I'm, I'm basically just interested in housing in town, having served on the school committee and concerned about, you know, the sort of interaction of, you know, budget demands and high taxes and high housing prices. It seems like everything's kind of converging around the need for more housing in town. So I'm, I'm just interested in, in seeing what the dynamics of that are and figuring out what is acceptable and what's not.
Okay, great. Thanks, Andy. Okay, so I had started a short list of types of data, it'd be nice to gather. I've made a little headway, headway on some of the things. I'll just share that with you and then I'd love for you all to add to my list. And I'll keep the list of what kinds of things we might want to put together. So as you all know, when I first joined the planning board, I was trying to figure out just percentages of rentals, period. Both in a total town and then somewhat by neighborhood. So I think that's a useful metric. More recently, I'm thinking about the change in that as a very important indicator. Meaning, can we track year by year over the last 10 years? And show that there's an increase in the number of rentals? Right? Is really what I'm thinking, but I don't know if that's true until we see the data. That's proving a little difficult. So Nate, that's partly why I've been after the things you've been helping me gather. So the first place I went to was sort of the rental registry data. That, those numbers over the last, I think Rob sent me four years or five years. It's pretty flat. It's a little strange. There's a huge dip, must be COVID related, I'm guessing, in the number of registrants, but then it's kind of just flat. So my gut feeling tells me it's not very accurate and there might be a few reasons for that. Probably the program is new and let's all remember, it's all just voluntary registration at this point anyway. So I'm not sure that's a real good source of timeline information. So the other thing I've been working on more recently is trying to gather just deed transfer information as a way to track the numbers of sales going to investors. And some of it's really obvious because we're talking about LLCs or LTDs and stuff like that. I think it's safe to assume that's not a a single family resident. It could be wrong some of the time, but it feels like it may be a useful measure. I was able to get just this last year's data. And, you know, 14 or 16% of all sales went that direction from individuals to companies. And so year over year, that keeps happening. You know, it's easy to do the math and realize very soon there won't be any left of, of actual individuals owning houses. So I'm still working on that because there's some holes in the data. It's proving difficult to get more than this past year. But I still hope to, to gather that. There's a lot of data in the housing assessment, needs assessment document that Nate, you sent us all and is in the packet, I think, right? There's certainly things like just things that jumped out at me, like our median age in Amherst. It was like 24 or something, opposed to the rest of the state, which is 39. So it's obviously just the student residence, right? There's things like that we can pull in and have prepared to discuss. I have some thoughts about that, which, that whole study, but that's I think a different conversation. But if there, I think there are other useful, useful metrics in there we can pull out. There's things like I mentioned, they got planning board, things like water use of Amherst. I'm still trying to find where that data is, but we're unique in the state, I think. And I think there's other metrics similar to that. Really just to make the point that we are maybe an outlier in majority of the state in certain ways. The last thing, it's more anecdotal, but just for example, last week, I'm part of a search committee that's trying to bring someone here, sort of mid-level, decent salary. They came for a tour, they went around with a Realtor, they can't afford to live in Amherst. So it's, it's not just, and we always say this, but it's really true. And so I don't know how to quantify that. Maybe we could get a Realtor who we know to think about this with us to show properly that indeed it's, it's much less affordable here than would be expected for median incomes or some, some measurement. I don't know who the right body is to help us put that together. So, yeah, those are the sort of things I'm starting to think about. Certainly, please add to this, everyone, so we can start thinking collectively. Fred, you got your hand up?
Yeah. Jesse, just you're, you may likely be unaware of this, but regarding the, the metric that you are working on as far as rental registration, I can tell you there is an organized attempt which I'm not part of, but there is an organized attempt going on right now to resist
Yeah.
participation in the rental registration on the part of the landlord organization.
Yeah, I get those emails also as a landlord.
Yeah, so.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. And, and yeah, so again, it's not perfect data set, but I had hoped the trend would still be informative even, you know, I imagine every year, the same people who are not going to do it are not going to do it. So that might still be useful, but yeah, point well taken. Karen?
I think it's worth getting some anecdotal information. For example, my friend Marilyn Smith lives in a house on Ellen Street. She's lived there for maybe My friend Marilyn Smith lives in a house on Ellen Street, she's lived there for maybe twenty-five years. And she has seen each, every single house in her street, which was owner is no longer. So that might not be registered, it might go that years later, but there are residents who, very few, because she's gonna go sometime too. And there'll be no one left. And I'd be willing to interview her as someone who can talk. And name the names really of one particular street as an example, and I think we should include that.
I think that's a great idea, so so if we can all reach out to people like that to write a short. You know, one paragraph, here's what we've seen change, that reminds me actually something I didn't mention, the reason I started thinking about sales. Was I, my, what I, one of the things I would like to show is that it never goes the other direction. Meaning, an LLC never sells to an individual. Because to me, that's a really important point that I've said many times. But I don't actually know it's true, this idea that it's a one-way. It's a one-way decision, once a house becomes a rental, it's basically never going to come back to be. A family or permanent occupants in the same way. Um, okay, uh, Bruce.
You mentioned the the housing study, um, and I read it pretty thoroughly, I mean, it's it's a bit of a. Uh, an effort because there's so much data in there and and trying to compare, they've done a pretty good job, but they've organized it in in sets. But then the interesting aspect is to try and. Draw conclusions of the data on this table or figure versus that and what can you mean and so forth, so for example, the. The 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 evidence of uh lack of affordability in town. Um, is certainly laid out in one of those tables, it says, it shows the escalation over the past ten years. Uh, some something in the three hundreds and in in the in the past five years to six hundred and sixty, I think. Um, and then this shows you how it happens in various parts of the town, so not all parts of town are the same. I think I remember thinking, well, we've got on the one hand Orchard Valley and then Amherst Woods and North Amherst is interestingly somewhere. And in the lower end of that, so I was. Uh, and and I I found that a very interesting uh document, I I I. Want to trust the accuracy of all those data points and so forth, um, I I guess I have to assume that it's accurate. Um, and be interested, there's no way that with anybody would challenge it, it's kind of interesting to see the. Different sources, the way the assessors office collect data on their bases on the one hand versus the state or. Federal agency, that's the ACS or whatever it is, I I realized that there was lots of things I didn't understand about that, they. Uh, there was a sheet that was sent out that you, there's questions and so forth, I have a bunch of questions that I've asked on it. But I think it's uh, where I'm headed is perhaps what I could do, Jesse, is to offer to go through that document. Uh, specifically with the uh, the question of identifying uniqueness. And classically defined uniqueness, not just a little bit, but a lot, so and 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 I think it it certainly compares where Amherst stands. In relation to the state and to the county and so forth, but it it may, it won't necessarily. Uh, identify that it is the 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 extreme outlier. But it might be a basis for having a a line of questioning that could. Say, well, this looks like we are certainly an outlier. Um, how can we establish whether we are the extreme outlier or not? Because that's that's kind of the basis on which we would use to make our argument. So I will commit to going through the action plan again with that particular filter in mind. If you think that's useful.
Yes, I think that'd be very useful, just to pull out and organize bits like that for us, um. So so I was, Nate, maybe you can comment on who put that together, who was involved in. Bring that together and if, is there opportunity to ask for anything different? Because the one thing that was on my mind a lot when I read it, I'd spend a fair amount of time also digging through it. They really use census data as the basis for most of the population information, and I understand why. It's available, but then I think a lot of the. Conclusions, or at least the data presentations feel somewhat false, because we know. There's so many students in that census data. We can't think of a specific example right now, but it seemed like it it was, the way that things were represented, we're not respecting or reflecting. That indeed we have fifty percent or whatever transient population. And these are clearly all tables and ways to look at things that are, you know, useful for more stable town, I think. So I don't know if there's a way that can be teased apart easily, or if we can make requests like that, but.
Yeah, I know that, you know, it's a Bera Consulting, so you know, their employees, the housing production plan is, um, you know, it's. It's a pretty formulaic plan from the state's perspective, so they have a, you know, pretty detailed outline of how you would go about. Generating it and even down to like the subsections of the chapters and so. You know, in our scope of services, we did ask for kind of different data sources, and so we've we've already provided that feedback to them, you know. It is difficult to get at some of it, um, especially also because the twenty twenty census occurred. During the pandemic and also they changed the long form, so the kind of reporting information that they gather is different than what they had in previous. Uh, years, um, and so we've asked them to look at different. Different things, um, that could be used as, you know, a proxy to something, so whether it's. Um, different, you know, talking to different organizations about, say, uh vacancy rates or. Uh, you know, talking to the Donahue Institute or Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, if they have ideas, um, looking at, you know, rates of eviction or something, you know, but. Again, it's going to take a little bit more work on their part, so Greg, Rashane, the part-time housing planner. You know, he and I have met and then we've 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 talked to the consultants about that. Yeah, I mean, I, and I I had thought that maybe they would even have access to proprietary um data, so when RKG Associates. Completed the Conference of Housing Market Study almost ten years ago, you know, they, you know, they would subscribe to. Some data sources, so you can get at it a little differently and so we had, I had even asked that of them, like, do they have other? If they don't, do they know people who have, you know, informa- you know, access to other kinds of information? Because I do feel like the census data is a little generic. Uh, two, you know, so in their conclusion, they said that we have a vacancy rate of like nine percent.
Yes, I noticed that.
When we've, you know, and you know, our previous report and others have always said it's less than two, it's probably actually closer to one. But given that data point, that time, it may have actually been. Nine percent, but yeah, so anyways, yeah, I I don't, so we're hoping that either there's, um. Yeah, I don't want to say a disclaimer on the housing needs assessment or some qualifications or some kind of introduction of other data to. So, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, uh, Janet, please.
So one of the great mysteries of Amherst, and I've heard people discuss this a million different ways, is how many students live in Amherst? And so, you know, if our population is now forty thousand people, it used to be like thirty-eight. Um, you know, there's almost twenty thousand students living on campuses, probably nineteen nineteen-five, so. You're already at half the population of Amherst's students, and then the question is, who else, you know, who are the other people? And we know that there's been a reduction in people in the sort of the middle years of thirty to fifty-five, I think. I think older people are going up a little bit, and I think children are sort of going down a bit, and so I wonder. If there's a way to get at that number, like who are the people between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five? And the assumption would be most of those are students, not everybody, but I think we're, I mean, I think we'd be lucky. To have seventeen thousand non-student residents in Amherst, and I think it could be lower. And I think you could get to that number, I mean, I I I think there's a bunch of different ways to get to that number, one of them is. You know, I get a census thing every year, asking who lives in my home, I'm not sure the students are going to send that back, but I think most homeowners would. And, um, you know, so I think, like, can we just cull out the non-students or the people who are younger? Um, and then the people who are sort of post, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six, and I think we're, I think we would have seventeen thousand people. At best, not in that category, I think it might be much lower, and that's probably why. Every time you go to the grocery store, you see five people you know, because it's a small town and, you know, this conversation came up recently in a meeting. And, you know, this is a small town with a lot of students and that has a nice, there's a lot of nice things to that. But, you know, for people like your friend Karen and people in lots of neighborhoods, there are more and more students. And, you know, we built about eight thousand, eight hundred new housing units in the last five years. Um, you can figure out how many of those were affordable housing, because we have some good projects that came through. But I would say that, you know, you know, that's units, not beds, and I think the bulk of that went to students, so I think most of our new residents were students. And so, you know, is, you know, I think that's the phenomenon, and I just think that number, that number, who are the non-students, who are the students? Should be like, the planning department should key on that and know that, like, we should all know what that number is. Within a margin of five hundred people on either side and, um, I know Jennifer Tab has, you know, looked at the census and saw that. There's a reduction in year-round residents or families, and so I could ask her where those numbers are, but I think that number is really key.
Yep, I I would agree, I was gonna bring that up also, that Jan and Pam, I think, spent some time with the census data. Uh, last year or from two years ago, I'm not sure when, but yeah. Fred.
Uh, yeah, um, Jesse, uh, when you were looking at like LLC ownership and so forth. What about trusts?
Right, so there's, I think it was eight percent trust from last, say, last year, but yeah, it's another category.
Yeah, because, um, lots of trusts are are in effect, they were remaining owner occupied. Including my house. So, um, you want to be careful about conflating, I'm not sure how you tease out. What is really a change of occupancy as opposed to what.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be a margin of error with any of these approaches, because it's just static data and, but yes, point, point taken. Janet, you're muted.
Quite, so I was gonna say, if you had, you know, fifty trusts, you could just go to the property card and say, oh, there's an owner or this person, you know, you could, you could figure out. How old they are by looking at the town record, so you could eliminate those people, I think, pretty easily. It's kind of a move you make later in life, too.
Yeah. Yeah. What else, any other thoughts on what kind of information would be useful to pull together?
Yeah, I was gonna just say, Jesse, on the rental permit history that Rob provided, although the property, the number of rental permits, say in the last. Uh, three, four years, you know, changed by like a hundred and forty, the number of units. Is, there's an eight hundred, you know, unit difference, right, increase in number of units, so. I think we could provide. I I I don't, maybe more detail on that, so, you know, say from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-five. You know, it's a hundred and thirty different, hundred and thirty more rental permits, but the number of units is quite big.
You're right.
And so it it might actually be. And so some of that would be, I think we'd have to look into, previously, we may not have, um, you know, you might, we might not have asked that on rental permit, so if you had one or. Forty or fifty, we just wanted a rental permit, but now we're asking for more detailed information, but it could be, you know, like what. So I think all this, I think all this can be mapped and maybe. You know, um.
That'd be great, I mean, again, you know, months ago, I was hoping to try and learn, teach myself how to do that and never got very far. But yes, to to map it would be really useful potentially, can you guys see my screen, just so everyone's. What we're seeing, this was the data that Rob and Nate sent me, uh, by year, the rental permits. Again, voluntary registrations, number of units, number of beds, and Nate, you're absolutely right, this increase, I remember looking at that and then I didn't. Think much about it, because then I also noticed the number of beds didn't change. I mean, it did a little bit from over the four years, but with this three hundred more units, twenty-four, twenty-five, there's only. Two hundred more beds, so I don't know, there's some some disconnect, but yes, this does seem like an increasing trend. Even though this is not as much.
Right.
Well, yeah, something there. Uh, Bruce, go ahead.
Okay, uh, let me think, uh. I wanted to um, ask a question about the uh, the rental, um. Uh, the the housing, the housing study, I beg your pardon, um, I was going to ask this tonight, but since we're talking about it, on page forty-nine of that. Is the subsidized housing inventory, and we were talking about that a moment ago, and that's what caused me to go back to it. I found the, and I put a question in that spreadsheet, in that associated memo that we were given to put questions down on. It doesn't seem to have any reference to affordable housing units. That were established in, say, any of the archipelago developments that have happened in the past five years. Um, and I wondered whether that was an oversight or whether there's something about this, the particular definition of a subsidized housing. Uh, that somehow the the required fraction of affordable housing that would be generated. Uh, in those uh, housing units, why that's not counted there?
I don't think there was a requirement for archipelago billing buildings to have affordable housing until the town council. Increase, change at, so I think the.
Okay, okay, so that's why it's not there.
Only one, the most recent one is the only one that got into the new interpretation or the new ten percent.
That's, that's helpful. Yes, so, so to that extent, the twelve percent uh, affordable fraction of, uh. Uh, you, well, we're talking about University Drive and you were suggesting that we could ramp it up a little bit and and Nate was explaining why that. May or may not be possible, or may it may not be not possible, but wise or possible in the sense that would get the votes on council. Uh, but, um, so twelve percent is a, I I guess we just, if that's that being the case, Janet, and I guess all this happened before. After I joined the board or the or the 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 other stuff that happened before. Uh, it would help for people like me to know that, uh. What we are proposing in the overlay at University Drive is actually a significant improvement over what has happened in the very recent past. Because clearly we've missed a, an opportunity.
Yeah, and that was the planning board's interpretation of special permit, that I spent years arguing they could, they could just have expanded. It to include all special permits, because that was the language. In the bylaw, and finally the town council, you know, just made it clear like it covered everything, but I have to say very cheerfully. All the developers said we can't do ten percent, and now since we, the town council passed that, they're all doing ten percent, so. And I, I can, I can also look up like at sister towns and see what their percentage is, because I know it's been, it's higher than what we do. So.
Yeah, the world is full of people who can't do anything until they do it, I mean, the number of times I've been told that you couldn't do a green building. Or you couldn't do anything associated with the uh, enhanced performance of buildings, I mean, I would be. I wouldn't quite as wealthy as Musk, but I would be well on my way if I had a dollar or two for every time I heard that shit bullshit.
So the. So the SHI, yeah, um, you know, for instance, the newer um, archipelago eleven to thirteen East Pleasant does have affordable units and when. You know, at some point, um, probably actually next month, we'll request that they be included on the SHI. Um, it's, it can happen, it happens once a year, uh, where, you know, so they, you know, based on occupancy permits and other information we have to provide, and so. If they weren't on what the consultant provided, then, you know, I mean, those units are affordable and they'll be there, it's not. You know, eventually they'll get on there, yeah.
It was nice to think that that my uh, efforts on the part of Habitat had produced way more affordable housing than archipelago.
Okay, um, other thoughts before we move switch topics? I have one which said before and I'll keep saying it, I truly believe it's in our collective interest. To really only speak about the student home definition, uniqueness of Amherst idea. Terms of how it affects the long-term residents and not about behavior issues. I know we all feel that, but I don't think that's the right talking point, is what I'm saying.
So Jesse, I have two friends that, um, long-term Amherst residents that left Amherst. When they needed to, you know, one person sold their house because of a divorce and, um. You know, was looking for a rental house and everything was small or crummy or, you know, with too many students, the the more. you know, was looking for a rental house and everything was small or crummy or, you know, with too many students, the, the more expensive stuff had too many students. And then, and then when she was looking to buy, couldn't afford, and I have another friend who grew up in Amherst who had to leave, you know. And so is that kind of vignette, like, is that something you need to hear?
Yes, but that's, that's, that's perfect. That's what I'm talking about. What I'm not talking about, what I think we should avoid is, well, we need these rules so that we have a way to crack down on parties or to make the street less noisy. Like, like, I think the, the pressing issue is around affordability and who's choosing to live here. And not an attempt by the current residents to change behavioral, uh, you know, that we see. And I mean, frankly, I live right in the middle of probably most of it. And it's, it's not really a big deal. Once or twice a year, there's an issue, but like, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with this, all the families leaving, and yes, on my street, three people also moved out of town and now they rent it. Right? And so that, that's what I wanna try and stop from happening. That's it, but again, that's just my opinion. I obviously can't change the way others speak about it. I think we'll be more successful in making the argument, is what I'm trying to suggest. If we focus on uh, just that aspect of it and not the nuisance aspect of it.
Couldn't agree more.
Okay, um, I was hoping today we could spend some time, it's been on our agendas several times, both here and at planning board with the existing apartment uh, potential up increase in density that Nate had for, well, did you do that ten years ago or you just have it?
Yeah, I wasn't a part of that. So, you know, um, yeah, I guess it was, gosh, ten years ago, there was the zoning subcommittee and then some staff had said, could there be an overlay on existing, um, you know, multi-unit properties to allow densification? You know, a, a pretty substantial densification um, through site plan review. And the consultant, RKG, had kind of recommended that in the housing market study. And, you know, we have nine point two two in our zoning bylaw that allows some, allows that through a special permit with some conditions, which isn't as easy as it sounds. And so the idea was, well, you know, given some of the larger apartment complexes, could they be densified? You know, there's already students there and infrastructure and, um, you know, there could be economies of scale. And it never, it didn't make it into a zoning amendment. I think it was just a discussion.
And do we know, do we know why? Do we know, were there negatives pointed out that stopped it or it just lost steam?
Yeah, I think, I think there's, you know, I think some people questioned if it was appropriate or if it was, would be used. I just, I think, I don't know, I just think maybe it just didn't, at the time, wasn't seen as a priority. I mean, I think there was a, you know, other things that the staff or people were looking at. But, you know, it's interesting, I do think because the, you know, the housing market study mentioned it, um, and others have mentioned, other consultants we've had have mentioned it since then as well. You know, I think it's something to revisit and, you know, maybe it doesn't, you know, and, and honestly, I think some of it was, um, you know, if you look at some of these areas, you know, they're now fifty, sixty years old or however old they are. And it's at a point where if they need capital improvements, you know, could we incentivize some strategic redevelopment? And, um, you know, I've met with one owner who said they wouldn't be interested in it. I guess there's another who sometimes calls town and remembers from the conversation from ten years ago and says, will that ever happen? I think I'd be interested in it. So, you know, I, I don't, you know, it's hard to say how it'll be used.
I mean, whether, whether it's not, if it's not used, so what, right? It's just a piece of paper. But if it is used, great. I mean, to me, it really seems like low-hanging fruit. And that's why I wanted us to maybe work on it and push something forward to the planning board. Because, um, yeah, again, if nobody takes that advantage, we're in the same place. Doesn't matter. If one of the complexes triples its density, great, that's more beds, right? Um, so anyway, that, that's my thoughts on it. I don't know, Nate, if you're prepared to sort of talk us through a little more detail or, or if you've looked at and processed the the document from ten years ago and, and have, you know, maybe we can just look through it together and talk about what might still be appropriate or what needs work.
Yeah, I haven't, I've been, you know, focused on the ADU and University Drive. But I think, yeah, to me, um, especially with the downtown design standard process, I mean, I, I see it as, you know, say, for instance, we talked about the university apartments and how they basically just rebuilt it the way it was, kind of an odd site plan. And, you know, I've always thought, say, if you look at north of that, you know, presidential Puffton townhouse, like, you could almost create a grid of streets with townhouses. Uh, you know, it, it, if it's, whether it's one property or a few, and you could triple the density and you'd have, you know, whether someone could say a more uniform layout, but you still could have open space and parking and actually more usable open space. Um, and so I think there's a way to do it. I think when this was discussed, I'm, I'm not sure it was, you know, some, some of it to me is like, okay, we have to have some design standards and maybe a little bit more kind of a little bit more prescriptive standards in terms of what we wanna see. Or it could be really flexible. I just, you know, I don't, um, I, I think, we never got there, right? And no one ever really said, well, what does it mean to do this? Um, so the owner I spoke with said, if they had to take units offline for two years, um, and they did a phased development, the financing would be kind of complicated. And then how do they, you know, what's the right number of new units to offset the lost years of revenue and but I think for some owners, that's fine, right? They're willing to undertake something like that.
And but again, like, we keep coming back to developers are creative. So, you know, that's a them problem. If we're just saying, yeah, we wanna allow more density, like, guess it's someone who wants to do it will figure it out, right?
Right. And we could just say really simple and say we want more density, or maybe we have some standards, like, you know, we wanna make sure we have, you know, good setbacks or height limits near the edges, I, you know, or whatever we think is gonna be helpful.
So I guess procedural question, if that's what we wanted, do we need to do an actual overlay on these places officially? Or can we just let it be known that uh, planning department and planning board is interested in those projects so they can come for a special permit? Like, rather than trying to figure out the guidelines ourselves?
Yeah, special permits discretionary and the, the language in our bylaw to me is not helpful in terms of whether it could be permitted or not. So whether it's an overlay or a change to the zoning, I think there needs to be some zoning change that would make this, you know, workable.
Thanks, Bruce.
I think if, I, I, I may or may not be thinking about this correctly, but my general understanding of this is that there are places like Puffton and, and Colonial Village and, and we're talking about sites that have got existing uh, multifamily housing on them, is that correct? But at a fairly low density and, and uh, the, the, but it would seem, as you're saying, uh, Jesse, that it's a kind of low-hanging fruit, at least conceptually. Um, Nate just talked about some of the developmental hurdles that need to be negotiated from a development standpoint. From a, but from a regulatory standpoint, it does seem like low-hanging fruit. But it seems to me that the way to talk about this or to galvanize conversation or focus and so forth um, is that, uh, to use that university housing, uh, uh, example. In other words, uh, we had this place and it was redeveloped and it was redeveloped uh, right back to the way it was, more or less, was, there was no, uh, there was no opportunity. Uh, it's, it's an opportunity that was missed. It was a piece of low-hanging fruit that dropped off and rotted on the ground. And I think that if we can use that example as saying, we've seen this happen and we don't want it to happen again. What do we need to do in order to take advantage of this low-hanging fruit and so that we can eat it rather than watching it rot on the ground? And expressing it like that, it's a kind of a, um, rhetorical way, I suppose, but some version of that, what I just said, that will basically in a sentence get the folks in town or, or developers in town or people who are relevant to this, you know, who are players in this game, I guess is what I'm saying, that we can communicate in a sentence to what we're trying to do, what we're trying to avoid, what we're trying to exploit. We don't want the opportunity that, uh, to escape again. What do we need to do to make sure it doesn't? And Nate's just said that what's in the Bible, I guess, under, you know, a route through non-conformity isn't a powerful enough incentive and we should, uh, look for something that is, uh, more powerful. And I think, uh, we should, uh, continue to put some time and effort into this, Nate, to the extent that you can support this. But, uh, but, but, uh, it does seem to be, uh, I mean, I drive past that place and I've, you know, I've picked up a fellow Habitat volunteer in there, um, a year or so ago. And I was driving in there and I was, that's when I started getting so aware or so disappointed that we seemed to have dropped the ball here. And then I know, uh, the ones, the other places that are all around us up here in North Amazon, I think. Um, this is where student housing is established and it works fairly well. And, uh, um, we should, uh, make sure that it, if, if, again, as we've been trying to do at University Drive, if we can create, um, uh, well-thought-out concentrations of places where students can live and live, uh, well, and maybe even generate a density that will create some commercial support, you know, stores and so forth like that. I mean, all sorts of benefits could happen. It could be good for North Amherst um, center. Um, so, but that particular example seems to be the, uh, the rhetorical lever with which we can, uh, open the conversation, open the can of worms or mushrooms or whatever's inside.
I like the fruit and mushrooms mixing. That's good. Um, thanks, Bruce. Uh, so how best to proceed? So, so Nate, obviously, some of the work has to come from you or other staff. What, what's your bandwidth to start thinking about this? And like, you know, could, when, when will be appropriate for us to really try and dig into the revised version of the overlay from ten, ten years ago?
Yeah, I mean, I would say give it a month or so. Um, I mean, it could be that the subcommittee talks about or individually members, you know, I mean, if we know we wanna look at it, spend some more time and say, what is, you know, what do we think? You know, even if it's not technical, right? Like, what are your thoughts about this? You know, is it, what, what do we think is needed? And then that'd be helpful.
Okay, so does everybody still have, there was an email from, hang on, maybe I can tell you, that Nate sent to us all uh, October seventh, and it had these maps attached to it with two Word documents. Do you all think you can find that or do you want me to resend it around? Um, I can send it to Janet as well. And so maybe for our next meeting, we can all at least read through the one document that's titled multifamily apartment MFA district, which is, I guess, the beginnings of a proposed overlay. Um, and, and we can go through that together and discuss what we think makes sense, doesn't make sense. And then maybe Nate, that can be your starting point to maybe try and rework it a bit for us. If that, if that sounds reasonable to you. Great, Brad? You're muted.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to throw in my two cents that, uh, uh, it is low-hanging fruit and, uh, I, I like Bruce's analysis and, uh, uh, I'm all for it.
Great, thanks. Bruce, were you saying something else? You're muted also.
Sorry, I didn't know I was, uh, if I was muted. I was, I was only, I went looking for it. Uh, and I, I know where it is in my file, so I have it. But it was the October tenth and there's a suite of four files and, uh, that was sent, so uh, you don't need to send it to me.
Okay. Anyone else need it? Again, I can easily send it. All right. Okey-dokey. Other top, other discussion on the existing multifamily places? Okay. Um, next on our agenda, which I don't think we've ever gotten to actually, was, uh, housing types, unit sizes, density, footnote M, subdivisible dwellings. This is something Fred, you brought up, it must be like six months ago now, then I'm not sure we ever got much conversation about it. So things do you wanna discuss? I've got another twenty minutes if we have more to talk about. Nate, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we, anyway, we, we talked about it, what, you know, footnote M or additional lottery it does is kind of set a density, but it's a moving target. And, um, you know, Mandy and Pat had proposed something, you know, the other year, the planning board spent time talking about. And I don't know, I, I, I think that, you know, I, I, I think that there could be an easier way to try to write um, what we think is appropriate density, say, in the RG, whether it's like units per acre. And then we can prorate it or something. So, you know, um, you know, ninety-eight fearing, you know, the other year it was proposed that they would add some units. And all of a sudden, I was like, oh, wow, there could be eleven units or whatever number on this property. And you know, it's not just the, um, number of units, it's, you know, parking, number of beds or what the impact is and you know, I don't know, it, so to me, it's like, if we think that in this zoning district or these areas, we think a good density is a certain thing. You know, if, I mean, six units is less than what would be allowed now necessarily per acre. But if we think that's what it is and, um, and then it doesn't matter what kind of housing type it is, but maybe we, you know, we specify whether it's, you know, we have all these different uses in the bylaw, whether it's subdivitable, converted, townhouse, whatever, apartments. But it kind of gets at all, everything everyone's been talking about. Sometimes I think, is that the right way to go about it is a density? And then we have different, um, housing types or uses. Um, and so to me, it's like, if you allow three units on a property, does it really matter if it's a townhouse or a converted dwelling? We could just call it a, you know, Mandy and Power saying, let's just come up with a triplex definition, a quadplex, and then after that, it's apartments. And so right now, our zoning bylaw defines apartment as three units or more, which is kind of odd because it, um, we don't allow apartments in a lot of places. And so we're actually, I feel like there's this point in, um, our residential districts where we're, we don't allow kind of like, say, a, a good three to eight unit development because of the way the zoning works, except for waivers or things, and it just seems odd. So, I know part of this conversation to me would be like, could we make some of these things clearer in terms of definitions, density and housing types? And, I mean, it's, it's a really, it ends up involving everything you read, Jesse, but, um, maybe there's a way to do it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I agree. I think that, um, you know, the real issue is it's multifamily housing and we have all these different definitions of it. And so I think you could make it more coherent, easier to understand, um, maybe easier to permit. Um, and not, you know, but I think I would recommend, you know, keeping the safeguards in the different kinds of housings in terms of appearance or, you know, owner occupancy or whatever, or supervision. Um, I think it would be really helpful, you know, the RG is sort of a very special district. And, um, I think, you know, Nate, a couple of years ago, I don't remember if this is pre-COVID or not, I think it was, you, the, the planning department did a bunch of build-out scenarios on different lots. And, um, it was super helpful to see that. And I wonder if the, this group would wanna see those because you could see what four units would look, I think there was one, I don't know if it was High Street, there was one, a build-out on, um, I'm blanking on Lincoln Avenue and, and, you know, I think it's kind of a startling density for neighborhoods that don't, you know, that aren't like that. And so, you know, it is a really big question about, you know, how many, you know, basically RG, you could have basically seven units an acre and that's a lot. But when you start figuring out the parking and the setback and what does the building look like, I think those would be really helpful to do. North Hampton also has this set of, they, they did this as part of their planning, like a, a book of like, this is what eleven units per acre looks like, this is what two. And I could, I think I have that saved, so I could try to send that around. But I think if Nate, if you could send those around again, because people, you know, know those streets, right? And so it's, it'll be, it was very, it's a different look when you're talking about X per acre than when you graphically see it. You think, oh, that looks great or like, holy shit, you know, which maybe depending on if it's next to you or whatever. But, um, I could send out that North Hampton thing. I thought that was super useful. And, you know, the North Hampton thing is a lot of density and most of it looks pretty nice, you know, um, stuff. So that's the other issue, I think, is how it, how it appears and looks.
Yep, that's a good idea, Janet. I also very much, even though I have a lot of background thinking about buildings, the, the one figure in the dent, in the housing assessment, just talking about the missing middle, all the illustrations are different sort of building sizes and stuff, that was a nice illustration as well, which could go along the same lines as what you're talking about, Janet. Brad? Fred?
Uh, yeah. A footnote M, I think. All of you know that I'm the person that put footnote M in the bylaw. And. It was six thousand, not three thousand, when I put it in, it was six thousand for. Its first twenty-odd years and Mitchell got it changed, not Mitchell. Prior director before. Chris. Got it changed to three thousand. But. Yeah, it was, it, it, it was a direct response to a zoning board of appeals. A special permit that resulted in density that was unacceptable. And I took that around and. Got a lot of signatures from Lincoln Avenue, we had a lot of signatures from Whitney Street and so forth. And when that went to Amherst Town Meeting, it passed unanimously. You don't get zoning amendments passing a town meeting unanimously very often. And Francesca Maltese was the moderator at the time, who's a professional. Land use person and. She took me aside after that vote and shook my hand and looked me right in the eye and said. Fred, you just saved the general resident zoning district. So I, I, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of footnote M, I'm in favor of returning it to six thousand. And I'm also totally open to discussing. How to accomplish that in other ways. I'm, I'm, I'm very open to that. But it, it didn't come out of a vacuum, folks. It came out of a real situation. And it had enormous support in town. So, you know, the, I think the town wants us to do something about this. And I'm, you know, I'm perfectly happy to. Engage in any, you know, discussion that's positive around this, but yeah. If you, if you do the math, that, that's, you know, I, I, when. The, the special permit came up on Farring Street. That I know Jesse, I think you were in a butter. I did an analysis, a footnote M, an analysis of. Farring Street and Lincoln Avenue and. These, the streets in that vicinity. And I did it at three thousand and I did it at six thousand and. The, the situation that would, would, that, you know, your neighborhood was confronting. Would have been substantially affected in a positive way. Had that, that footnote not changed. So it's, it, it, it. How can I put this? There is a good reason to, to work around that, so thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Other thoughts? Yeah, Bruce.
So do I understand correctly then that. By the way, Fred, I, the bylaw that, the version that I have is the current footnote is at four thousand, not three, but. That's just, it may have changed.
No, you're, you're right. It's, it is, but it is, it did go down from six.
Yes, yes. So, so the question then, I think, from what Nate, you said earlier was the. Question before us is, is. Would we be better advised to seek to return or contemplate returning the. The footnote M to six thousand? Well, first off, first of all, I guess the question is, and I think the answer to this is yes, because we've seen some. Those developments around recently, but that suggest that. The RG would be well served by having a, a, an elevate in, in that number in footnote M. But I guess the question then becomes, is that's the better way to go? Or, or Nate, I get, got the impression that you had. You thought that a more elegant solution to our problem. Would be of change, would be obtained by. Different strategic actions, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, in our dimensional table three, we have. The basic minimum lot area and then we have these additional lot area for family or, you know. And they're different for different zoning districts, but then we have footnote A or M. And so it's like, oh, well, you know, in the RG, it's this, but oh, you can get a waiver here or a waiver here, something modified and. And so, and. And then other zoning districts as well. And so I was, what I, what I was thinking is, well, is there a way just to have kind of a. Kind of a prorated density that doesn't require a waiver or a footnote or something. And so if we have, you know, basic minimum lot area. And you say you have. You know, thirty thousand square feet and we think that, that appropriate density at thirty thousand square feet is four units. You have up to four units, that's all you get. You don't get a waiver, you don't have to go through a footnote and it's just. You know, because I think, I mean, what Fred is saying is that at six thousand square feet, it kind of did that, but then. Through these modifications and waivers. The dimensional table is, you know, can be modified and so, in many different ways, it's hard to say, well, what is the density you get? On a property or. You know, given a size and so. I don't know, I mean, we don't have uniform lot sizes, you know, or anything, but it's just one of those things where it's like, oh, is there a way to say that? And come up with something that's pretty easy. So it's not like someone could come in and say, well, you know, if I'm going to do a converted dwelling, I can get up to four. Because there's this exception, but if I'm doing an apartment, I can only do three and. If I do townhouses, I have to do four thousand a square feet and actually I can do five. It's just, I mean, it's just, you know, one of those things where. Is there a density that, that's?
Yeah.
You know. And I think, right, and I think they're, sorry, I think there could be design standards and things folded into this and I think it's a. Would be a sweeping change. I think, you know, Mandy and Pat had kind of proposed this. In a way. And then we realized it had much bigger implications than just a perfunctory change, a no to a yes or a no to a special permit or site planner view and change a few things. It's. You know, it's a pretty big change. The planning board has taken, departments looked at this a few times, so. Also, a number of years ago, we tried to map kind of density, you know, and we probably could, we tried. Getting a figure ground relationship and number of units on properties per acre, per whatever. You know, because some of the RG, a lot of it's non-conforming because the lots predated zoning. And so, but anyways, I was just trying to get at something that isn't. Doesn't have so many different kind of possibilities, which maybe we can't, right? But it's just. I think some of the projects recently have said, wow, I think we can get really dense and maybe that's not what we want or people thought could happen.
That sounds like, again, a bandwidth question for you. Right? And so, so is it smarter to maybe think about both? Would it be potentially simple to? Increase it back to six thousand? And maybe try and get that passed through while at the same time thinking what you're thinking about Nate, because I agree.
That's, that's where I was headed, because I wanted to follow up on that. I was trying to figure out what, what, where we should be putting our marbles here.
I mean, respecting your time.
And I think that if, if we think there's a problem. And certainly the, the, the. The, the kind of development that was put for Farring Street, first of all, it came to the local historic district commission with both Karen and I. Are still on. And then it came ever so briefly, I think, or maybe not at all here. But it was a rather shocking realization of what was possible. And so if, if we think that, that, that this is likely to. This kind of initiatives are likely to continue, I think we'd, because I think at the moment, since they need. In that district, or not in that district, in that. Oh, sorry, in that portion of the zoning district, which is covered by the local historic district of Sunset Lincoln. Development needs first of all to get a certificate, a certificate of appropriateness from. From the local historic district commission before it can move ahead and it hasn't gotten that yet. So that has been essentially the. The, the gate that is not exactly close to them, but they just haven't gone through it yet because they haven't come back with a. It hasn't come back to us, you know, you know, you know, yet. So maybe the, but, but the local historic district commission isn't going to solve that problem in places outside the historic district. So it seems that maybe there is a problem and maybe, as you say, Jesse, the. Because of Nate's bandwidth and because what Nate just went on to describe was something fairly elaborate. It seems that an interim solution might be to, to as Fred suggests and seek to restore the original. Figure.
Do we know why it was changed to four thousand? Like, who led that charge and what was the rationale?
I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of it could be, well, you know, do we need to get beyond, you know, large lot, single family zoning and have some. Some flexibility. But I'm not, you know, I could dig into what the real, you know, what was the consideration there. It may have just been, you know, if we're allowing certain uses and. Districts, but then we realize that they can never be permitted because of this additional lot area. Either we just say no to them or do we allow them with this kind of modification? I think, yeah, I think the easier solution would be to look at kind of the existing table and footnotes. And see, you know, working with the building commissioner and staff, like how, what are the changes that could be implemented? That make it, you know. That, you know, change it. And then we could, you know, also be thinking about what's a kind of a bigger, more comprehensive look at this. Like I said, it's just interesting in the RG, you know, you have footnote A and M that apply. And so in certain instances, one regulates the other and not other, you know, and it's just. You know, like I said, so at fearing, right, it's different density if they did duplexes or an apartment or townhouses or whatever and it becomes. You know, which is, I guess, if we like that, that's fine. But it's odd that you can, you know, then you never know exactly how to use that, that table, right? Someone. Have to go through a different, a number of different scenarios to figure out what is actually the density you could get. And so maybe it's cleaner if we say in the RG, we eliminate footnote A or we change footnote M and that's all there is and it's clear and understandable. I mean, I'd be fine with that too. I mean, maybe that's the route to go.
That makes sense to me, I think. Fred, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, two things. First of all. That, if you do the calculation and you look at, at neighborhoods around town and. This is something that. You know, when I was creating that, I, I did very carefully. You know. I own and live in a, a three family and. The. It's, the, the three family, it is entirely conforming. In the general residence zoning district. Even with or without footnote M. We're very, very careful. I, I can tell you this, I think most of you know, this is my second go around on the planning board. I. Was on for. Almost seven years in the late nineties, just. Passing into two thousand, two thousand and one, something like that. And one of the things that I always looked at and, and I. For a long time chair of the zoning subcommittee, one of the things I always looked at was. To what extent is this zoning proposal going to create non-conformities? And it was always something I tried to avoid and. Footnote M, I can tell you was crafted to, in, pretty generally. If you go across the RG zoning district. It does not, e- even at six thousand, it does not create non-conformities. So I, I would put, just put that on the table. The other thing I wanted to mention, I am also the author of subdividable dwellings. And there is, there are some, there are a couple of problems that. Need to be fixed on, in subdivitable dwellings. One is the definition of owner occupancy, which does not include trusts. That has to be fixed. And indeed. The definition of owner occupancy, I, I wrote that because. The subdivitable dwelling depends on owner occupancy and when we created the. Subdivisible dwelling development method. We also created the definition of owner occupancy because you had to have that definition in order to make subdivitable dwelling work. But the more significant issue with subdivitable dwelling is that. It applies to new construction. And a subdivitable dwelling is something that would be very useful, even in existing construction. I would love to be able to reclassify. The three family I'm in as a three family subdivitable. Uh, subdivitable dwellings have some very important benefits. I remember talking to Hilda Greenbaum about this. She was completely unaware. That subdivitable dwellings come out as part of the initial permitting process, which means. That a bank will take that into account. See, a, a, a bank is not going to look at a piece of property with. Eighteen thousand square feet and say, yeah, you could get a special permit on that. We will. We will organize the financing around the, that this could be as a, a three family. They're not going to take that into account because special permits are discretionary. And a bank can't finance based on that, which is why subdivitable dwellings were written that I specifically wrote that. So that it could be, it's part of the original permitting process. So it, it can be taken into account in the, in the original financing. So. But. And, and, and that was my focus, but I'm. You know, twenty twenty hindsight. It shouldn't be limited to that. It should be something you can also back into. Because it allows you to. You know, based on family size or personal circumstances, it allows you to take over. Maybe a, a unit and then, and then put it back into tenancy later. All as subdivitable and then you, you. You know, you set up the construction and everything so that it is amenable to that. So that, that's, that I think is, is fairly simple to do. And I, I, I think we want to look at that.
Maybe, maybe you can work on a change suggestion. It'll be great. I've got to go in two minutes, Janet. You're, you're all welcome to stay. I just have to go.
Um, I was going to say, I think we want to avoid increased density everywhere in town. And so. Um, you know, and, and I think the RG under the current footnote and with the change number is. The only people that are going to use that opportunity are going to be developers and then. You know, and so I think, you know, the RG is, I think, too dense. Um, under the new footnote M. I think we need to balance, we are increasing density on University Drive. If we increase them in the village centers and the apartment complex. I think it's kind of nice to decrease the density in the residential neighborhoods, which the primary goal is residence. For all types of people and we know that the developers are really aiming at that student market. So. I would recommend going back to the six thousand foot thing and add in any kind of, you know, I don't care if it's a townhouse or. You know, a three family or whatever, just to protect the RG. Take a pause and, you know, maybe we're reworking all the multi-unit stuff. But just to protect the RG from that. And then, you know, focus the density where it should be, which is the village centers and the downtown. You know, we can't just keep on saying more and more density. And, you know, I mean, you can, you know, but you're, at some point, we're just going to look like Long Island or something, you know, we're not. It's not the town that we kind of all want and it's not, you know, the master plan. Um, and things like that. So I think you, I think we have a good moment where we could say, we're increasing density, you drive, looking at apartment complexes. And let's go back to the original stuff in RG and just make sure, you know. You might have a family convert to a three or four. To the original stuff in RG and just make sure, you know, you might have a family convert to a three or four, you know, unit. Um, thing with owner occupancy, but not, you know, seven units an acre, which is just going to be a. A developer's, you know, the only person that's going to do that is a developer.
I support that completely. Thanks, Janet. Um, Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, say it's a really interesting, um, discussion, and I I'm really, uh, excited about the. Low-hanging fruit example, I mean, I think we do, I I'm really concerned about housing supply in town, I think everybody is. And for a number of reasons, and so. The idea of finding ways to densify is is high on my list, but um, I I understand that maintaining the. The character of the town, I just don't know. I I don't know if there's, you know, I I don't know what to think about footnote M, I've heard a lot of confusion about it, so. Um, but I I just appreciate the the thought that you're putting into it, and I just wanted to say, I I I think it's really exciting to think about the. The the low-hanging fruit example you talked about, so thanks.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, I've got around, we're scheduled for January fourteenth for our next subcommittee meeting. On that agenda for sure will be to go through the uh, increasing density in the already apartment. Places document from ten years ago, and maybe we can come up with a actual proposal to s- to send to the planning board around footnote M. Whether it's just increasing or whether it's something else, so maybe we can focus on those two things. Uh, we'll see what happens between now and then. Okay, see most of you tomorrow night at the full board.
Merry holidays.
Yes, happy holidays, everybody.
Yes, thank you.